Hi, everyone. Welcome. This is the Auburn School Committee meeting for February 26th, 2025. This meeting is in person and is being recorded by the Auburn cable television and all are welcome to join us in person here at Five West Street. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body is available on the town's website and the public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Thank you. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. We will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
All right. Thank you, Dr. McCrillis. Do we have anyone here for citizens' comments tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, it's a bit unfortunate that our new board member is not here, but we'd like to recognize Chloe Chang, who joined us just recently on this school committee. She was recognized as the Telegram and Gazette Student of the Week. Chloe was nominated by Auburn High School math teacher Lisa Healy. Lisa wrote, "Chloe's a senior. She's an exceptional scholar who consistently ranks among the top students in her class, earning admiration for her maturity, authenticity, and insatiable thirst for knowledge. Beyond academic excellence, she exemplifies compassion and a deep-seated commitment to making a difference in the lives of others. She became an active tutor with Schoolhouse World, a free online platform dedicated to supporting underprivileged students globally. Throughout high school, Chloe's extracurricular choices have been deeply intentional, driven by a desire to expand her knowledge and contribute meaningful to others. Rather than pursuing activities for the sake of building a resume, she has consistently chosen to engage in endeavors that reflect her values and purpose. Chloe has set a remarkable example for her peers, and we are immensely proud of all she has accomplished and the bright future that lies ahead." So we are very proud of Chloe and we're happy that she is on our committee and thank you for all her hard work.
Yes, looking forward to congratulating her in person when she's back. So that's great. Good for her. Okay. Is that all we have? Yes. Seek approval for the minutes from February 5th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 5th, 2025.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, and we do have student reps tonight, so I'll turn it over to you guys.
Hello.
Hello.
So I hope everyone had a good first week start, their week from break. I just wanted to mention that the polar plunge is quickly approaching on March 21st at Auburn Middle School. I encourage everyone to sign up. It will be a great day, and you can find the links to sign up across all social media platforms as well as on their website, specialonpicks.org. Winter sports are also coming to an end, and the spring season is starting up on March 17th. And then tonight is very exciting because it is the first round of playoffs for our boys hockey team, and the student section is dressing in red, white, and blue for USA theme, and the whole boys hockey team bleached their hair.
Oh, my God.
Oh, we can't wait to see that.
The National Honor Society is having their induction ceremony for the newest members on March 6th. On March 4th, the Students for the Environment Club is hosting a fun movie night on a blown-up movie screen inside the high school gymnasium. They're going to be watching the Lorax from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Admission is $5, and snacks are going to be there. They're going to be sold. Prom is coming up soon as well on May 10th, which people are looking forward to. And also this week, students are picking their courses for next year.
Wow. We're moving right along. That is crazy. And I think somewhere in there, I don't know if it's the 21st as well, but Fame is doing a dinner. I don't know. I thought I saw something.
It is the 21st.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just throwing that out there, too.
Yeah, and there's a bunch of things I'll have a notice going out on Friday.
Okay.
That's included in that.
All right, yeah, a little fundraiser for them, so.
I think that's also Auburn Nathan Family Casino Night. Is that the same?
Yes, 21st. Busy day.
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you very much, girls. That was a great report.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, nice to see you. I'm glad you guys made it. We missed you. All right, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Chamberlain, for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, yes. So we have no student spotlight tonight. With the change of dates, it goofed up folks that were going to come, so we'll have someone another time. This is the second posting of the Auburn High School program of studies, but as you heard, the hockey team is in the playoffs. We had to have either our athletic director or the building principal at the game, so he had plans to come here, but he needed to be at the hockey game. So, and Dr. LaBeau was unavailable this evening, so we will have this on the next agenda. So the next item is the FY '26 budget, that I'd just like to provide you all with an update. So as you know, we began this budget process with a 5.7% increase from last year. The budget now stands at a 4.3% increase. Some of the reasons why we were able to come to that number are included here. So as you know, we received that transportation bid. I talked a little bit about that the last time, but since then, Mrs. Stanek's been able to work with AA Transportation. So they initially came in at, we had budgeted for a 10% increase. They came in at 9, and she was able to get them down to 8. So that was a really good move in the right direction, so we adjusted the budget for that. We actually, since we last met, had a teacher who has requested to extend their leave from this year through next year, and we are not going to replace that position. But that was a savings of $98,000 by not replacing her because of where she is salary-wise. So if you recall, the last time we met, we talked about the potential for the cut of four positions, but all those four were all estimated at about $52,000 because obviously it would be positions for folks that are new to us. So this actually covers almost two of those, so that was a change there. We did find something that had been missed. We have a teacher who's retiring next year, and we hadn't adjusted the salary down as we normally do because we'll now hire someone less experienced, so we made an adjustment there. We continue to have a placeholder at Auburn Middle School for a position that won't, for a position that won't be filled. I don't know where that position will land based on enrollment, but we do still have that placeholder. Mrs. Stanek did some digging, and we realized we were able to use some satellite and galaxy funding a little bit more aggressively than we had in the initial budget, so that was an increased offset of $35,500. And so because of that position at the high school at $98,000, we were able to continue to include both of the positions at Swanson Road and the Bryn Mawr Park one that had been in as a $1 placeholder, so those are back in the budget. And we did, again, we showed a decrease in the general education transportation and special education in-town transportation to reflect the bid and the negotiating that Mrs. Stanek did with AA Transportation, along with, we've included now the increase in the transportation fees and the parking fees, which is roughly about $33,000. Along these same lines, so on Monday evening, the Select Board transmitted the budget as presented to them, to the Finance Committee. The budget presented by the town manager on all the departments in town, for our budget, what they reflected was $155,367 less than this 4.3% budget. And that was, they are working very hard to not go over the 2.5% tax and to not access excess levy, the excess tax levy. So in order to do that, that's how they met their, what they're trying to hit, their target. Now, what they have said to me was, part of this is also because they're not really sure about their state funding yet, so they could be additional funding that can mitigate that $155,000 hole that we're in right now. We too could see some additional state funding, completely unknown at this point, that could mitigate that $155,000 hole. We just don't know that right now. And so it is a little bit of a waiting game, but at the Select Board meeting, I was asked if there's no additional funding and if indeed there's this $155,000 hole, what else would we do? Well, our other choice is to cut positions, and that's what I said to them. The majority of our budget is payroll. We don't, you know, all of our supplies, there's no big buffer in any of those other categories that we have, so it would be positions. Unless the additional revenue comes in, then that changes that, right? And to what degree there might be additional revenue, we don't know yet. So at this point, we're in a little bit of a holding pattern, but it is clear, you know, as you know, the town this year is in negotiations with all of their units. And so they have a lot of unknowns, like we faced unknowns last year, right? So they're trying to balance that with not knowing where they're going to land with all of that. So certainly not where we want to be, right? We don't want to be in a $155,000 hole, but I do believe that in the end, we will resolve this in one way or the other, whether we see some additional funding or we have to make some difficult decisions, which I think, you know, a couple of positions were put back in here because something unexpected happened. But if that's something unexpected now doesn't help us in the way we thought, we may have to go back to the previous plan, right? But I believe that we, you know, we really want to focus on maintaining the services we have for kids to the best degree that we can. And so at this point, I don't know that there's anything we need to do. I'm certainly, you know, happy to take your questions, but I think it's a bit of a hold right now to let's see how some other things play out. I believe they're going to put us as the school department on at one of the end meetings for finance to give some time for these things to shake out because they're aware of that. They were very, the Select Board appreciated the fact that we tried to look at how we could pull in some revenue to the degree that we can. They were appreciative. They're actually asked about the math program, which thankfully they are in support of us using that CIP money as well for that. So as always, I've never found the town to be anything but supportive in that way, yet as we know, right, there are limits to everything that we can do, and they're trying to live within those limits, too. So I am hopeful that we are going to land in a place that's going to protect kids and keep us well, but yeah, it's a little bit of a pickle right now. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Chamberlain?
Through the chair, I'm just, can we look at page six? Page six, it says grade six math, showing it's highlighted in yellow. Why is that highlighted in yellow?
So those two positions, right?
Well, I know the one below is a placeholder. You already said that.
Yeah, so that's the one that I had not adjusted the salary for the retirement.
Okay, and then same thing on page nine. Can you, so I'm assuming that the comment on the top one is you're taking the money from satellite?
Correct. Yeah, and this one, you know what? I'm glad you bring that up. We had not, so we have, we do have a revolving account for non-resident tuition. So some of our teachers, right, they pay to have their kids come here, and we have in the past had a couple of kids tuition in, special needs kids typically, and so we decided to hit that account as well for that $50,000.
And then same thing on page 12. I understand the top one, but what do you mean by kindergarten under the highlighted part?
So that was, I had, that position had been taken out previously, so it was put back in.
Okay. And then page 15, the one that doesn't say what it's for?
Yeah, so same thing. That had been taken out previously. That was the Swiss position that had been removed. That's now added back in.
I think that's not in there.
I think toward the end.
I can see that one, yeah.
Yeah, there's on page 20.
Yeah.
Is the adjustment to the offset for transportation.
Yeah.
And the amount was adjusted.
Now, I know that this has been brought up, but what is, I'm just trying to find it. So in certain parts of the budget, it says classroom supplies, and I think that we need to clarify that. What does that mean? Because in the high school, it's $24,000, and then another, I think AMS, it's 17, so can we just clarify what that is used for?
Yeah, so that's used for everything. That's used for sticky notes. It's used for Epson bulbs for classrooms, sometimes some additional, it'll even be tapped sometimes if, let's say, one English class needs some additional books because, you know, trade books because they might be falling apart. We got to replace them. We might use it for that. There's a variety of things.
Copy paper.
Copy, yeah. It's a whole, you know, construction paper, glue sticks, soup to nuts of the things that kids use in class. And it is somewhat based on enrollment to the degree that we can, right?
Yeah.
So the larger schools have the bigger amount in those areas. Thank you.
Okay. You all set? Sam?
Yes, I'm great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Through the chair, I'm just gonna, again, ask if at all possible, I hear there is some concern over all the increases we're making for our families, so if there are any more additional revenue, or not revenue, but additional ways with the budget, that we can maybe look at that in the future.
Yeah, so I think depending on what comes in for the state through the town and depending on what may come directly to us from the state, there could be some room for that.
Okay, great.
There definitely could.
Awesome.
We just need to give it some time to see how it shakes out.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to make a point before we move on, just that this fluid document that we currently have going is truly as transparent as possible. I want to make sure that people know that they can access this document at any time, and if they don't know how to do that, then they need to reach out and find out how. But it is truly scrutinized by all five of us, you know, and we are doing our due diligence to make sure it's a valid and purposeful document. It's also scrutinized by the Board of Selectmen, and it's scrutinized by the Finance Committee. And we also do have public hearings, so I just really want to stress to people out there that we are very transparent with this. There is no fluff, you know, it is what it is, and I really do welcome people to reach out if they have questions about it. Instead of going on Facebook, reach out to one of us directly. We can explain it. I will not explain things on Facebook. I hope none of you guys will either. It's just not appropriate. But, I mean, we are an open book, and I kind of get the impression that some people out there might think we're moving money around or we're being, you know, malicious in some way, and we're just not. So I really want to just clear the air, make sure that everyone knows we are accessible and we are willing to talk about this document. I believe in this document. I feel like you've done your best. I feel like, Mr. Keller, you have. I feel like Jen, you've worked really hard on this, too. I truly feel like this is a solid, good thing that we're putting forward. I do feel bad about the fees and whatnot, but we do have to come to the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee with some initiative that we are trying to come in with some money, some revenue on our own and not just hitting the general taxpayer up for more money. So I guess that's the end of my soapbox rant, but.
And to even go before that, we spend a number of meetings with the town when we're beginning this process as well, where we're looking at the, through the lens of the town's finances, because that pays, plays a big part of this. And so I am thankful, you know, to Mr. Kazanovich and now to Dori Vecchio for the multiple meetings we had and the times that we worked around all this, their assistance with getting us to CIP for the math program. So this, you know, this starts in early October, right?
It started last year.
Yeah, and, you know, we don't just, it's not just a rubber stamp, like, let's pick a number and put it through. We've gone through every single line, you know, and even that $16,000 with the person who's retiring. Like, I was like, oh, that was like hitting a jackpot, you know, and it was, it was, the retirement came in late, so it wasn't something that had been like when we were first talking about all that, so it was an easy miss, but that makes a difference, you know? So I agree with you and I appreciate, you know, I'm happy to talk to anyone as well. And, you know, if there are new ways that we can do some things, that's great, but there's been a lot of things that we have done in new ways to save money, you know? We are just, we are a heavy payroll organization, as we should be, to support kids.
Right, and I feel our teachers and our staff are worth it. It is 80% or more of our budget.
Yep.
And we have a lot of fabulous, great teachers, so, sorry.
And through the chair, I think that I can speak for all of us that we 100% want what's best for the kids.
Yes.
And so we, you know, like you said, we welcome, I welcome anyone to reach out, but at the same time, like, I know I will not communicate on Facebook. It's just not appropriate. My email is available. Everyone's email is available, so, but I know that what, when I came on this board, I wanted what was best for all the students at Auburn, all the students, and I want them to get the best education humanly possible. I want to be proud, and I am proud to be an Auburn resident, but I want to continue to be that way, so.
And I think class size plays a huge role in that, so, I mean, my hesitation is, you know, we don't want to cut staff and everything, but I completely, I see all sides of it and, yeah, it's a hard situation, but we will get through it. And, you know, the state funding, I feel optimistic that good things are coming, hopefully. Not going to, yes.
And I think it's important to note that our teachers do so much behind the scenes that none of us even know.
That none of Facebook knows. Yeah, they're always going, going, going.
I can think of.
All summer.
20 stories just with my three children alone, so kudos to them.
Yeah, truly.
Think about the teachers that go to ski club after school and they watch those kids until like almost 8 o'clock at night. Like, that is dedication right there.
It's a job that. And I appreciate that they do.
So more to come.
Yeah.
More to come.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is just giving you an update. So at the last meeting, you voted to approve the additional, I think it was about $83,000 out of stabilization, and then I have to go to the Select Board, which I did on February 10th, and they approved the use of the stabilization fund for that residential placement, so we appreciate, again, their support in doing that. Just as another plug at the elementary level, very soon, our K-25 report cards are going to be electronic. They will be accessed through the parent portal in Power School. We're a few years into that returning student registration, so now all of our families have accounts, which should make this easier for folks to access this. Letters have gone home at the elementary level, and there'll be more communication coming out as we near the report card distribution, so we'll see how that goes.
Wow, we are so high-tech.
So high-tech.
I think it's great. I think it's fabulous. We can.
Yeah.
Save some money on some copies.
Safe paper.
Yes, yes.
And then the parents that don't get them because their kid's like at the bottom of their backpack, lunch spills on it, you know, so we're good. We're just getting there.
All right, the good stuff. So we'll move on to new business.
So in your packet, you're going to find a cell phone toolkit that we received from the Attorney General, Attorney General Andrea Campbell, sharing with the Massachusetts school community about initiatives related to cell phone use in schools. This was precipitated by her concern on the impact that cell phones were having on a student's experience in school, whether that be as a simple distraction or whether it be through a serious case of bullying or whatever it might be. And so Mr. Keller and I met with Mr. DeLong Champ, Mr. Carlson, actually, it was Dr. LaBeau, Mr. Carlson, and Dr. Lopez, because we do have a number of students at Swanson Road who have cell phones as well. And so it was really just a preliminary meeting to begin a conversation about, do our practices meet the needs of our kids and are we appropriately supporting them, given that we know cell phones in many ways have a detrimental impact on not only the mental health of kids, but their ability to attend and just as a distraction? So I give that to you for your review, and I also included in your packet just a very short sheet on what our current practices are. Seemingly at this time, as long as these are implemented by everyone, particularly at the high school, the initial feeling was that it works okay. However, implementation can sometimes not be consistent, which then disrupts the whole process, right? If one person doesn't follow through with putting them in the, whatever they are, the caddies, it can become a problem because now you might have a student in the hallway with a phone and they're on the way to the bathroom and they're doing and saying things they shouldn't be saying. So I wanted to share it with you. I look for any feedback you might have related to cell phone policies that you may have heard of. I do believe in the coming weeks that we're going to put together a committee of some stakeholders to talk it through. Do these practices that we have in place meet our needs, or do we need to change them? Do we need to formalize them? I, you know, I'm not going to make that decision myself, right? This is a big conversation. We've all become so dependent on them. I will say that we've also, in this conversation, the book.
Anxious Generation.
Anxious Generation. If you have young children, I urge you to read this book and the impact that social media, not so much the cell phone, but social media has had on the mental health, particularly girls, but also very, very impactful on the mental health of boys. And it's a marked change that was, you know, scientifically noted as, this is when it happened, is when social media really hit. Back when you had the flip phones and you had to, you know, it was three taps to get to the third letter, you took a little longer, right? You didn't have access to a social media platform per se, but it really has had a detrimental impact on kids, and I would say, I would venture adults as well, right?
Absolutely.
Very easy to go down a rabbit hole.
Through the chair, if there is a committee and you're looking for someone for school committee on it, I would very much love to be on that.
Okay.
And that was going to be my next question, I guess, is how can people join this committee?
Yeah, so we're at prelim, we just met.
Just an idea.
So we just met, yeah, so that would be something that I'd put out in a communication, you know, and see, you know, we'll have to determine, I haven't even thought about how many people might make sense. I'm certainly going to want some students on there, right? I think their voice is going to be really important to have as a part of that.
Teachers, parents.
Yep, teachers, parents, yep, administrators, you know, I think, I think the more folks at the table, the better. But again, as we sit today, it doesn't seem that we have a really bad problem with cell phones in our buildings right now, right? Now, do we have issues with cell phones? Yes, we do, so don't misunderstand my words. But for the most part, and large part, kids are following and teachers are following what's laid out here, and it's helping to minimize access. But, you know, there are still times when there has to be an intervention, so I do think it's a worthwhile conversation, just because of the influence it has on all of us. So more to come, but there's some good information in that packet, so.
Yeah, I did read through this. I mean, there is the three levels. I like how they broke it down, you know, there's extreme to very loose and somewhere in the middle is the next one, but, you know, and they give the curriculum ideas and everything. It's really a valuable beast of a document for a beast of a problem, so.
Well, I actually thought about Spencer Canard's students that came and talked about the common sense media and what they were doing with that and, you know, just charting their notifications that they get over the course of a day and how disruptive and how overwhelming in numbers that was. You know, some of those kids would be great voices.
Yeah, definitely.
To have at the table because they're really thinking about it deeply.
And through the chair, I think that, like, we may even want to update some of it because it just says current cell phone policy, but in here, it said something about like any person, it said like headphones and things like that. I think we're starting to see more of like.
The AirPods.
The AirPods in the ear and like.
And the watches.
And the watches, yeah. Like, so, you know, so I think that there's, maybe this needs to be hashed. It's not, there's nothing, like, as you said, we're not having a big issue, but someone could look at this and say, well, it doesn't say an iWatch, you know, so they can really pick that apart, so I think that maybe it's like timed, like, if the basic is working, if the basis is working, stick with it, but just add, like, define what.
Yeah, and honestly, this isn't, this is as formal as this has gotten, so I just wanted to put on paper what's happening right now. It isn't even that formally at this, you know, written out at this time, and so I do think that's something that you all have to have a say in, but I think the best way to do that is to get a bunch of people together and really talk it out, so.
And figure out implementation and follow through, basically.
Yeah. Yeah.
We need the teachers, unfortunately, to be the big bad bears and, you know.
Yeah.
Through the chair, um, I noticed Auburn Middle has them in their backpacks in a way, and Auburn High School has the caddies. Any feedback on which one works better or is it just different because of the age groups?
I think it's a little bit different because of the age groups, honestly. I I think, I think off and away at the high school, I I think that's going to be a losing battle.
Yeah, well, I mean, like, off and away in their backpacks versus putting a burner phone in the, I've heard of, you know, the burner phones and the thing and, I don't know.
Yeah, and the other one in their pocket.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
My students have done that on testing, so.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, I don't know that, so they even say someone was, we discussed the yonder pouches, right, that some school districts have. Um, they said the same thing. So the kid puts a fake phone in the, or a burner phone in the pouch and they keep the other one on them all day. So, you know, one, once upon a time, I was a Wiley uh high school and middle school student and they're going to continue this, right? It's it's part of the that uh growing up, I think. But I think the big thing is if we can in a thoughtful way help them to see that this is helpful to them, I I think it'll be good, right? That's that's the whole idea. Uh, and honestly, you know, I think it would be good for all of us because I think we're all a little too dependent sometimes, right? So.
And I also think through the chair that like we need to really spell out like for kids with accommodations that like medically need their phone on.
Oh, sure.
You know, so, yeah, I think it's a good thing we're heading down that road, so.
Yeah, and I will say, you know, Swanson Road, they don't really have any trouble in the halls or anything like that because of the nature of the school. But we do have issues on the bus.
Yeah.
Because once they get on the bus, they take the phones out and, you know, just recording someone that doesn't want to be recorded and, you know, the things that kids do and that's concerning, you know? But then I have parents who, that's how they track their kids. So that'll be a, that'll be a piece of that, too, you know?
That's how I track my children.
There are some bus companies that you can track. Like on the bus, there's like an app.
They all have the cameras. They all have dash cams.
Not the, no, it's not like visually, but like where they are.
They can track it.
So AA can track their buses. They know exactly where their buses are all the time.
Yeah.
AA does. So like there have been times that I've said to them, I need their, they call it their Zonar. And it can literally show me like every like two minutes or every minute and a half where the bus is. It gives an address.
Yeah, but through the chair, if if parents do track their children using Life 360, it does show the last known location, even if the phone's off. So I can see that my daughter's last known location was at AMS. And so I'm okay, I'm like, okay, there's, she's there, I'm good. And then I know her phone shut off for the day. So and then as soon as she turns it back on, it ping again, and I'll know that she's moving again. So
Yeah.
I mean, it it's not like it shuts off and then deletes where the where the person is.
Yeah. So it's a, it's already, right? This is, this has been a conversation, so I can imagine that there'll be, everyone will have something to say about this.
And a lot of good ideas will be added.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Things we haven't even thought about.
Yes. All right, the next item again is a routine sharing of the Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative second quarter report as we are required to do, um, to share with you. So um, just an update there, they're doing some great work. That's all I have for this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, we will move on to teaching and learning. Mr. Keller.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so I most recently talked about um the committee that we've had studying uh a math textbook grades K through eight at our February fifth meeting. Um, so I wanted to update you on that if I can scroll. Um, so I mentioned this uh in passing last time, too. Uh, we've been, we started in the fall of twenty twenty-three as a K through five and a six through eight committee. And then ultimately, uh, we renewed big ideas at the middle school so that we could um assess um K through eight together, believing that potentially it would make a lot of great sense to have a uh common textbook uh K to eight. So we evaluated that together. I won't go through each uh point on the timeline, but uh it's been quite a while that we've been together, uh reviewing data, um identifying. Uh, so HQIM is um high quality instructional materials. It's uh, you've heard me say that a couple of different times to you, but that is a major initiative on the part of the Department of Education. Uh, and I'll talk about that uh very briefly in a second. Um, we narrowed our list down to five uh publishers based on the high quality um instructional material list. Um, and then uh in the fall, we um identified finalists. Two of those um publishers that we brought in, brought forward felt like we could um that would fit well in in our school system at the K through eight. Um, and then uh our last step in this was uh evaluating some major pieces of data. So that's obviously looking at the materials themselves. Uh, we went on site visits, as I mentioned last time. Uh, and the last piece of this that I hadn't mentioned to you in our previous visit was we did a Q and A with uh each of the publishers and then collected survey data from a lot of uh districts uh throughout Massachusetts. So um, that was our timeline. Uh, very quickly, I won't bore you with uh HQIM, but uh it is uh from Department of Education. Uh, it's an initiative on their part because they believe strongly that uh with the right textbooks, with the right uh curriculum materials, we can narrow opportunity gaps, accelerate student learning. Um, there is a lot of evidence that suggests that uh with high quality instructional materials, uh you can have a equivalent standard deviation of uh essentially a a point one zero standard deviation, which is equivalent to uh the difference from a a teacher who's in his or her third year compared to a teacher who's in his or her first year. So their um, their, a lot, their research suggests that it's, it is significant to have that that, the high quality instructional materials. Uh, we have two resources that we lean heavily upon in Massachusetts. The first is Ed Reports, which is a national organization uh that studies uh textbooks throughout the the country. And then Curate is Massachusetts version essentially of Ed Reports. So Curate pulls information from Ed Reports, but also puts a Massachusetts uh twist and has Massachusetts educators looking at these materials to make sure they're appropriate for um our state. Um, so I mentioned, I think I mentioned this last time. So we identified two finalists, and they were I Ready, which is from Curriculum Associates, and Reveal Math, which is from Agraw Hill. Um, so I, up up on the screen or in your packet is uh the first, the Massachusetts particular standard, which is Curate. So um, the left-hand column is I Ready, and so on those four criteria, content standards and organization, grade appropriate practices, accessibility for students and usability for teachers, I Ready met the standards, which is the highest rating you could possibly get. Reveal Math uh met the top three and then partially met in terms of usability for teachers. And uh Reveal Math was uh received um um critique for falling short in providing strategies for students with disabilities is where um is where they lost a couple of points. Uh, so then the next slide is in Ed Reports, and so uh same thing, they have um a lot of criteria, Ed Reports does, but they all fall under these three um areas, focus and coherence, rigor and mathematical practice and usability. Uh, you can see that both uh textbooks uh met expectations. Uh, and once again, um, I Ready scored higher than Reveal Math in the usability, uh where Reveal Math lost uh two points in that in that usability category. And um, and Reveal didn't get the full points because uh one of the areas was um the adult um providing um uh materials for the adult so that the adult can be learning the math as well. Um, whereas they felt I Ready did a much better job in that. Uh, and then mathematical practices in Reveal were not identified, informative and summative assessments is where they lost two points there, so. Um, those are those two pieces. And so ultimately, um, as I mentioned, we did a Q and A with uh with both publishers uh last week on separate days and had a um, I wouldn't say lengthy conversation. I expected it to be a lot lengthier than it was, but it was pretty clear uh on the representatives from the committee that we felt I Ready was the best um, best representative where we are, where we want to be. And so it is our recommendation that Auburn Public Schools adopt I Ready Classroom Mathematics, and it's K through eight textbook. And very briefly, I'll just kind of go into why. Um, I think you may be aware that we've been using their diagnostic um in K through uh five math and ELA for several years now. We have found their diagnostic to be outstanding, really predicts where students are going and and what we need to do with them. And so there is a, both a familiarity with it, but also uh an appreciation of um the excellence that it provides. Um, um, with that diagnostic work that students do in the classroom, they then, um, if you have the curriculum, the I Ready math curriculum, uh it then provides personalized lessons. Um, and and I put in a couple of these, some quotes from other surrounding districts. And so one of the districts talked about their personalized lessons as being exceptional. And, you know, it's not often that people rave about curriculum. You've heard me talk about that with the social studies curriculum when we went to investigating history. When people find, when teachers find something that they like, they will certainly talk about it, but more often than not, I feel like, eh, it's okay. Um, so when you see words like exceptional and a little bit later, you'll see where I talk about amazing, uh that stands out to me. Uh, what people liked about I Ready, both when we went in person to the site visits, as well as what was noted in the survey, was they have this, the the multi-day design. So students have the opportunity to first explore something and just kind of uh get a little bit, um, you know, things to get a little bit messy as they're exploring a concept, and then uh they learn to develop that and then refine their approach to it. So it's uh over the, over the course of time, they're learning how to approach a certain uh task. Um, in Massachusetts, we talk a lot about MTSS, which is T tiered systems of supports, supporting our highest level students as well as those students who struggle um and everything in between. And so um people talked about with I Ready, the differentiation is amazing. Um, supports for EL students, students on IEPs, oh, sorry, I put English learners um in there twice. Um, ease of use, uh you know that we've been a a universal design for learning uh district for many years now. And um, one of the teachers on the site visit, uh one of our Auburn teachers talked about essentially I Ready is kind of UDL at its core. Uh, and then lastly, the surveys that I sent out to surrounding districts, I Ready scored a four point six out of five in terms of their professional development. And we've seen that firsthand and and what we've done with them and and bringing them in to work with our teachers as well as us as administrators around the diagnostic piece of things. They have excellent professional development. And then the support that they provide on the actual uh technical piece uh was a four point eight, three out of five. Again, scores that you don't often see when people refer to publishers. There's this kind of general feeling of publishers are in it to make money and don't really support once they make the sale. And that was not the case in what we're hearing from districts that are using I Ready. So um, those are a couple of the reasons. And um, I also want to acknowledge, and I mentioned this last time, the committee. Uh, I'm just going to say their names really quickly because they put a lot of time and a lot of effort and um into this process. So Allison Simino, Dieter Lavesk, Gina Formanek, Gillian Anderson, Kristen Sandberg, Nicole Lane, Tara Connor, um Brooke Beverly, Cheryl Carlson, um Kelly Conardon, Erin Kane, Michelle Kepplet, Paula Reno, Sarah Kay, Stephanie Fontaine, Susan Lopez, John Bastian, Maureen Mahan, Monique Mazone, and Jill Clough. Um, I guess that said, were uh outstanding in reviewing these materials, going out on site visits and uh spending a lot of time together, uh sometimes virtually and and many times in person. So uh, so we're excited to be able to say that um I Ready is is the product that I think is great. I also want to mention, Dr. Chamberlain mentioned earlier, um, it's a lot of money to to bring on a a textbook, uh particularly a K through eight. So we're excited um that CIP monies are able, potentially able to be used for this purchase. Um, and then the last piece I'll just talk about is next step. So we're in the process of outlining our cohesive plan. Um, we have a professional development day coming up in March, and so I've reached out to I Ready, and they are prepared to uh meet with us on our K through eight teachers to begin some work on professional development. Um, and then, of course, we'll do work over the summer and and in August. And we've built in uh two years of implementation support so that makes sure that we can get this off and running and it can be implemented with fidelity. Of course, we'll monitor implementation of the program, which includes classroom walkthroughs, uh looking at data through I Ready and other diagnostic tests, MCAS data, feedback from teachers, students, and families. And then, of course, uh making sure that we educate families in in the new program because families obviously are supporting their children at home and they'll need to have an understanding of how they can do, how best do so.
Right, wow, great. It's a lot. Is, does the committee, I should know this, but we don't have to vote on that?
Yeah, you know, I think we probably should, yeah.
That's kind of a big purchase.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, should we do that next meeting or tonight or?
Depends how the committee feels. We've talked about it multiple times.
Yeah. Landy?
We've already kind of allocated the funds, right?
Yeah.
Through CIP, yeah, yeah.
All right, if we are ready to vote, then um
Ready.
Let's get a motion on the
Can I just ask one question?
Yes.
That's already in the budget, like this I Ready is in the budget that we just talked about. It's not in the budget. It's through our capital improvement plan. So we'll be using fund, which is a totally separate funding source. So there's no line, nothing changes in the, okay.
Nope.
That's what I needed to know.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the I Ready math curriculum for K to eight.
I'll second. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
It's good to go. It's exciting. So one question, will this I Ready program help parents with the math homework?
Through the chair, we use it where I work and and it's still very confusing, but I will tell you that AI does help.
I, that's what I use.
It's a gift.
Yep, and common core is color.
Yeah, touchy beat.
So we're not going to have to worry about it soon.
All right, well, you know, you can't have it all, so. Um, all right, we'll move on to the business and financial report.
All right, so I have provided you with a year-to-date budget report for the FY twenty-five school year dated February twelfth, twenty twenty-five for your review. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Stanek?
All right, the next piece is I have provided a memo detailing the busing bid results for the FY twenty-five to FY twenty-eight um school years. I am recommending that we award the bus contract to AA Transportation. And I just wanted to note that several vendors had requested the bid specifications. However, only one vendor um did put it in the bid, which was our current provider, AA Transportation. And um, they did work with me. I was able to negotiate. Um, so that our increase is that of eight percent increase in year one, a seven point oh seven increase in year two, and a five point nine three percent increase in year three. Um, this bid also has the option to extend the contract for two additional one-year periods. However, we will come back and discuss that um when the time comes. So I am seeking um your approval so that I can go back to AA and award the contract. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Ms. Stanek? Seeing none, let's get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the bus contract to AA Transportation, which reflects an increase of eight percent in year one, seven point zero seven percent in year two, and five point nine three percent in year three.
Second. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and thank you for doing all that work.
I just want to say
Yes.
that was an enormous amount of work as a brand-new business manager.
Reeling and dealing and
Yeah. But just the actual construction of the bid, right, for it to go out to bid is a process in itself because you have to specify all the little details that you need, and I just think Mrs. Stanek did a terrific job, so terrific job.
Thank you so much. And, you know, Ron is great to work with and we've had a successful relationship.
Yeah.
So um
Is that through it?
Ron is the um owner of AA Transportation.
Yeah.
Yep, and he's wonderful to work with and very understanding when I back, went back and said, you know, we're, we're having budgetary concerns and is there anything you can do to help? And so
Yeah.
we we have been lucky.
We are very lucky uh to have them as our, as our vendor. They are great to work with, you know, every place, nothing's perfect, right? And sometimes we have bus, bus issues, but um they really are very good to work with, very responsive. So I'm I'm pleased that we ended, we landed back with them.
Good, and they are close, they're right in town, so. Great, well, thank you, Ms. Stanek, for doing all that. Um, and we don't need executive session tonight?
You do not.
So um a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's vote. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Have a good night.